It's seven o'clock and I welcome you all to our special Munster Town Hall Town Council meeting, calling it to order at seven o'clock PM even. As the current council presidents and vice presidents' terms expired at the end of 2020, I'll be doing the meeting until we transfer or reorganize the town council and we'll do this again for the redevelopment commission. So I will begin with the roll call. Councillor Schoen.
Present.
Councillor Mellon.
Present.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Present in person.
Councillor Gardner.
Present.
And Councillor Kulturitis.
Present.
All five council members are present in person. And now if we can take this in a moment of silence.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. On to the next item on the agenda, which is the reorganization of the town council for the year 2021. I open the floor to nominations.
I would like to make a nomination to, for Dr. Andy Kulturitis to be president.
I second the nomination.
Any other, any discussion, any other nominations? Dr. Kulturitis, do you accept the nomination?
I do, thank you. I have one comment. Dr. Andy, I am excited to experience your leadership, not from the other side of the dais, but from the council this year. In my TULO Plan, transparency, unity, leadership, and optimism, this is the year of unity. So I wish you and all of us good luck. Thank you.
What was the, was that a, was the term you just used?
Oh, TULO, that's my acronym.
Oh, okay.
Transparency, unity, leadership. I gotta remember that.
You get too many of them there, Steve. Thank you very much.
I dare say that it's safe to close our nominations. So the nominations are closed and may we please, with no further nominations, let's, we can do a voice vote because everybody's here in person today. Correct, Mr. Westland?
Yes.
Yes, we can. So all those in favor of Dr. Kulturitis as town council president in '21, affirmed by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five to zero. The next item then is, we are opening the floor to nominations for a vice president for town council in 2021.
I'd like, oh, I'd like to move to make, or make a motion for Councillor Chuck Gardner to serve as the VP for the calendar year 2021.
I'll second that.
Councillor Gardner, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Any other nominations from the floor? Then I'll close the nominations. And we can.
May I make a comment?
Yes, you can, Mr. Town Council.
This is all our first, I mean, this side of the bench, it's our first year on the council. I've really enjoyed your work ethic, the way you approach things, the questions you ask. So I'm looking forward to coordinating with you and welcoming you to your term of the vice president.
Thank you. And likewise, I look forward to working with the rest, you and the rest of the council also.
Thanks, Dan, for your service.
Welcome, thank you.
It was not, it was not like a sort of normally year that we could just glide through. We really, it was, it was, it was a tough year, so.
It was challenging, Jim. Thank you for that, yes, thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Very good. Then we will close the floor and we will do a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Five to zero for Councillor Gardner as our vice president in the year 2021. And at this point in the meeting, we turn the gavel ceremonially over to our new council president, Dr. Kulturitis.
Thank you. That brings us down to the 45th Street construction update. Lee, don't board.
Yes, this is Lee Randall with the OZ. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Okay, Happy New Year, thank you. As far as construction goes, current operations are taking place in the Camelia Alley there behind Wall Four, as well as along Old Forty-Fifth there, that section between Calumet and the underpass. So what's taking place is water main installation is expected to be completed this week. Outstanding items there then would be the backfill of Wall Four, pave side ditch, some fents on top of a Wall Four sidewalk, and then subgrade treatment and asphalt and sod there within that alley. Hopefully, by the end of the month or early next month, we hope to have at least some aggregates in place and most of that alley then accessible to the residents. Bike path construction is ongoing. There's still surface to be placed on all of that, as well as work there at the lift station. Lift station construction is ongoing. We still have that compound to complete, as well as install the gas service for backup to the generator. And then there's still storm sewer along Old Forty-Fifth, as well as finishing some grading and seating there. Aside from that, there'll be perhaps some minor punch list items along Calumet and along Forty-Fifth, potentially, weather permitting. And that's kind of where we're at here at this point. I know that there is also anticipated through the Centennial Village development, a water main casing to be installed underneath CN, I want to say probably around the week of January 18th. So aside from that, if there's any questions that you may have, we'd be happy to take those at this time.
Any questions related?
Lee, this is Steve. Where did we end up on acceleration from in 2021?
Right now, I'm hovering around 300. There are still some outstanding certified payrolls, so it's incomplete at this time in order for me to kind of finalize that. So there's some subcontractors and things of that nature that still have to be kind of finalized.
Okay, thank you. And are you sleeping better now that you've got traffic flowing?
Yes, yes. There's nice traffic out there. There's a, it's not congested, but there seems to be a steady flow.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
All right. That brings us down to open to the public. Two minutes maximum per person or five minutes for group spokesman. Please keep your comments civil and constructive to public policy. Chairman, so discretion may reorganize individuals wishing to speak on different topics at any time in the open to the public session. All speakers will be timed by the clerk, treasurer, and this portion of the meeting shall not exceed 20 minutes. Anybody that wishes to speak tonight? Do we have anybody online? Dustin, any comments that came in?
No, but we did receive an email this evening from former councilman David Nellens that specifically requested the question. We entered into the public record. He is curious about the status of a generator for the town hall complex, and I can answer that. That was a item in our five-year capital plan. We are planning on purchasing it, and we are designing it right now with the load specifications. Jill DiDamaso at SCH is working with Dee Hensley from Novatec and Nipsco to identify the appropriate load, and with that, we'll be able to place the order for the generator and install that year.
We're looking at this year for that? Be completed or?
It could be this year. It depends on the availability of the generator to purchase. Certainly, we'll be in a position to order and install it if it's available. So it will certainly be ordered this year. Whether or not we get it this year, I couldn't tell you.
Okay. That was the only one?
That was the only one.
All right. I will close the open to the public session. It brings us down to the consent agenda. Where's your pleasure?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five, zero, approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. That brings us down to old business. We have ordinance 1815 second reading group transfers.
Mr. President, I would like to move to adopt the introduced ordinance 1815 on the second reading.
There's a second. Good. Ken?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five, zero to approve ordinance 1815.
All right. That brings us down to new business. Maple Leaf Crossing Development, third amendment to the development agreement.
This is the third proposed amendment to the development agreement between the town, the Economic Development Commission, and Maple Leaf Partners, which is Mr. Jay Leiser. This development agreement amendment is offered for your consideration to allow the developer to continue on pace. He will be before the plan commission on Tuesday, January 12th, to receive his final plat. The Reader's Digest version of how that legislatively goes mechanically, you either have to complete the public improvements for your development, have a bond for the develop, or have a bond for the development. Mr. Leiser is having the difficulty identifying the exact cost of the public improvement, which is, in this case, the installation of the intersection signal and road for the Maple Leaf Boulevard. So in order to comply with the process, the development agreement presented to you is a pledge from the developer that he will indeed install the public improvement, just not by the method by which our ordinance dictates. So it gets us to where we want to go, it gets us the assurances that we want to get, and it's here for your consideration.
I move that we accept the Maple Leaf Crossing Development, third amendment to the development agreement.
There's a second.
Yes, I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
Dustin, there's, in this amendment, there's points one, two, and three talking about how the bond will work. Could you provide just a little bit more explanation of that? I'm not sure I fully get it yet.
Sure. Yeah. All right. Yeah, Dave. So, under the law, our ordinance and state statute, in order to get secondary plat approval, which he's up for next Tuesday, which then you need that to go record your plat, right? Once you record the plat, you can pull your building permits and all that stuff, and in this case, it allows Mr. Leiser to sign the agreement that he has pending with his largest tenant, right? Because the largest tenant's not going to sign an agreement, so you actually have a plat recorded. You're supposed to either install the public improvements, which in this case is a road, and nobody ever does, because you don't install the road and then run a bunch of construction trucks over it, or B, post a bond for the amount of that road, or under state statute, you can, you can propose another financial commitment that is satisfactory to the municipality. So in this case, because the timing of things, we didn't have the estimate for the road and the intersection, as Dustin mentioned, so Mr. Leiser said, you know, it's going to take me, you put me back a month, right? If I have to go and get that estimate, get the bond in place, blah, 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 we'd be doing this at the end of February and March, whereas if you come up with the other financial commitment, which I'm willing to do, so it was suggested that this agreement be that financial commitment, and that commitment is that he's due an incentive for payment of his bond, and he agrees that he will not take that incentive if he doesn't do the road and the town of Munster has to do the road, because that's the purpose of the bond, right? If they don't do it, then we go do it, we tap the box. So in this case, if he doesn't do it and we have to do it, then that stream of incentive that he's going to get, the first whatever, I'm guessing around a half a million dollars, will go back to the town to repay us for the road.
Because usually the TIF agreement would be that the town takes out the bond, we start building the road, and we pay that back through TIF bonds, but this has been set up differently, where he takes the risk with the bond.
Yeah, don't confuse, yeah, don't confuse it with the TIF. Typically, he would go get the bond, right? The TIF would start paying to him. If we had to pay the road, pay for the road, we would just call it bond, right? So it would be a claim on the bond with the bonding company, or in some cases, it's a letter of credit with a bank, right? And they would just pay us, but he'd still be getting his income stream from the incentive, which is the bond. In this case, he's saying, well, I hear ya, I won't take any of that money, use that money to, you know, to reimburse you, although I will tell you, and I had a conversation with Mr. Gardner about this earlier today, you know, in order for taxes to start being paid and the project to go and the need for the road, right, like because of the project, if he doesn't build that road, we got bigger problems, right? Like the debt project is going to be going south. So I really think the risk in terms of the way this is being done is fairly minimal because he's, he's got to get that, that hotel brand that he's promised is not going, it's the only entrance, you know, viable entrance to their hotel. The roads gotta be built, and he's going to be in breach of that deal if he doesn't put, if he doesn't give them a road. So I really think the risk, all in all, is fairly minimal in terms of us having to, to go down that road and enact what's in the stock.
Thanks. Yeah, we needed the Reader's Digest plus.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, that wasn't exactly Reader's Digest, but, yeah.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
And President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five to zero to.
There are no reports, portfolio reports. Does anybody have anything to report? I know it's been holiday season, so.
Our court has already met this year, and the meeting, once they actually got started, was at least two minutes in length to elect the officers for this next year, and let me enjoy. But we have officers.
I do have one report I wanted to make. This last, yesterday, we, the town, we were monstrated against the renewal of a liquor license that is held by Marco's Bar and Grill on Ridge Road, and we had a very good case. Unfortunately, they, they approved it again, even though I expressed my concerns, plus we had several residents speak. Unfortunately, there were, he was able to obtain letters from a couple residents that supported him, that live right there, and as well as the, a business owner that actually came in and complained about the shots being fired into his business, he had turned around and supported him. So we were not successful. He's made some promises to turn around some of the activity that's happened in his businesses, but we, you know, so we can just hope that it makes good on his promises, but I wanted to put that into the record because we have all received complaints, and I want it to be recorded, that we did everything that we could do. And Mr. Westland did a great job putting it together.
So, thank you. It's always an uphill battle, right? When you're, you're essentially trying to take away the main mechanism for that business, which is the license, right? And in this country, it should be a heavy burden to do that. That said, I think we went a long way in meeting that burden, we didn't, the board didn't see it that way, but Mrs. Mellon is correct that there were remonstrances while, while I remonstrated on behalf of the town, Mrs. Mellon did, Mr. Mellon did, Mr. Reed did. There were several other residents who live in the condos nearby that also remonstrated. There were a couple of letters that were submitted, you know, people who live in the condos that were in support, as well as there was a business owner, the same business owner who was here in October saying, what are you guys going to do about this, was remonstrating in favor of, of that bar. So.
That same person?
Yes.
That same person. So, so you really, we went first and then they went, and so what happens is, is when, you know, you're presenting this mountain of evidence, and we submitted in writing over, well, there were precisely 58 calls for service at that location in the year And you have to keep in mind that that's 58 calls, and they were closed from March 18th or 23rd to May 18th. It's like a two-month window that you gotta pull out where no bar could operate, and then they've been on like kind of this reduced under order of the governor. So when you say it was, it was 10 months worth of, because it was through October, it really was like seven and a half months, and if you break that down, you're looking at like two calls a week. No other bar or establishment in town has a call for service, right, of two call, on an average of two calls per week. And I think is evidenced by the, I mean, it was a, I mean, it was a box that I sent down in November. The nature of the calls were escalating, right, culminating with the shots fired. So, you know, a lot of what we heard was, well, this is taking place in the parking lot, that's your problem, town, which it's not, because it's not a municipal lot, it's a private lot. So they got that kind of wrong. And there were a lot of promises by the owner of things that he was in process of doing, which is sort of ironic that he got notice of our objection to his renewal, and then all of a sudden, things started to happen, right? Like, and they're not done yet. Like, I'm putting cameras in the parking lot, I haven't put them in yet, I purchased them, but I haven't had them installed. So I don't know, you know, time will tell, right? But you have the ability when it comes up for renewal again. One of the things that was cited was, well, you weren't here, you know, in the past renewals, so it's obviously just a problem now, when in fact, you know, it's been a problem, it's just it rose to the level where enough was enough, and it was done virtually, which is always, it was always, it's always tough when you're in front of that liquor commission making an argument, and they're not like looking you in the eye, and you're just on the computer screen, and some of them you don't even get video of. It's kind of crappy the way they do that, you know? I realize in the COVID environment, it's gotta be done virtually, but I think that kind of hurt our case as well, because we would have had, you know, 20 people, 15 people, I mean, that chief remonstrated as well, I meant to say that. So, and he did an excellent job explaining the escalation of the calls, the type of calls, and the efforts he made in July as well as October to try to work with them to reduce those calls, and that none of his suggestions were being implemented until the last two weeks, which, shocking, the hearing's coming, I'm going to now do this stuff. So we cut, we knew it was an uphill battle, we kind of gave it, I think, as good of a shot in that, in that environment as we could have. Quite frankly, I thought their response bordered on racist, I mean, they blamed it on COVID and that they're getting a quote, "different clientele," end quote, right? So it just, it was, it was not a satisfying morning, let's put it that way, it was two and a half.
Is anybody looking through the parking lot to see if we have the same? And I realize people from Illinois are Americans too, but you know, with Centennial Park, we had, we just had more people there because the Illinois.
I think there is an increase in general, but I also think there's an increase in Illinois plates, which the way it was presented, and you would have had to have heard the presentation, and I'm not attributing my characterization to Mrs. Mellon, okay? That, that's my characterization. I was, I was offended by the way they tried to use COVID and the fact that there were these quote outsiders, end quote, coming in as their excuse to why they can't manage their establishment. And, and you know, at the end of the day, I don't care who's coming in there, you've got to manage your establishment, and they're not. And that, now they've pledged all these things, and time will tell, but it was pretty disappointing, I would say that.
Is it a yearly renewal, or how?
No.
Was it two years?
Oh.
No, and there, I mean, obviously, as I told the chief after the meeting, you know, you've got to continue to document what goes on there. You know, when you're not being called out all the time, and maybe you're called out for something, you know, I think the police have discretion on what they document, right? So if I'm getting called somewhere like, you know, once in a blue moon, and I get there and it's not a big deal, you know, I radio back, you know, nothing's going on, but I think you've got to make sure that we double our efforts in terms of, that our documentation is accurate, and that all calls for service are documented, because that commission asked him questions about it, right? Like, well, you know, if you go there and there's a fight in the parking lot, how do you know that it's starting, you know? And he's like, because the call came from inside the bar, and that's where we were going, and then by the time we got there, they were in the parking lot, because the bouncers were smart enough to throw them into the parking lot, because they didn't want them ripping the place up. So I need all that documented, right? Like, I got a call that there's a fight in the bar, and that's why I'm going, and then when I get there, they're in the parking lot, well, that's, I mean, that's still their problem, right? That's still their management. So, you know, and the commission asked stuff about like, you know, was there any violation of, and I wasn't really sure I understood the question, I thought I did, but like, it was almost geared toward, is there underage drinking? Like, are they violating the terms of selling alcohol? Was kind of the question. I mean, that was kind of a unfair question to ask the town of Munster, because we're not, you know, we're not excise police. There's a whole separate group that does that. So now granted, if we see a 12-year-old walking in there, we're going to do something about it, but like, to go in on a raid to card people, that's excise, that's not us. So.
Well, we would have no reason to be there unless.
Unless somebody called.
Call for it, so we would never know.
Right.
Well, all we can do is just continue tracking it, and hopefully it'll get better, and just hope there's no more gunshots, you know? That's the thing is, I'm more afraid of something harming our residents over there in that area, so.
We did make the point that, you know, even though they kept saying, oh, it's just a recent problem, we said, well, we have other establishments in town, and we don't have problems, so this is the way you're managing. My comment was, there's nothing precluded, precluding him from keeping the property and being, you know, being a landlord, but it doesn't appear that he can operate safely a bar, you know? But they didn't have any part of it, so, you know.
Ken is right next to residential neighborhood. I have never gotten on a complaint from there.
They just didn't care, I mean, basically, the board just seemed not to care about all of the atrocious things that were reported in the parking lot, like people urinating, and so the neighbors can watch people urinating in the parking lot, it's, you know, but we tried, I guess that's just, I wanted.
And it's a tough, it's a tough argument. So like, in the ones that I've seen in neighboring communities where they've been successful, it's been kind of a slow and steady drumbeat that gets it, because it's not the first time you remonstrate that you get it. It's, and then with escalating violence, and gosh, you know, you don't want that to happen, but I can tell you that two that I'm familiar with, with one of our neighboring communities to the north, you know, there was like gunplay inside the bar, right? And that's what, and someone got shot, and that's what finally got, was that, you know, and that wasn't the first incident of gunplay in the bar. So they had to keep remonstrating over and over again, and then finally, you know, unfortunately, it took, it escalating to that point. And then finally, you know, unfortunately, it took it escalating to that point. And we're trying to get there before it escalates to that point.
I'm wondering what things we can do to help hold them to account for the commitments that they've made at that hearing? It sounds like we're now in partnership basically with a business in town for the next two years. Yeah, what?
But they made the commitments to the commission of us.
That's correct. And they, part of the commitment was that this is going to make things better, which is why it's incumbent on our, you know, and it stinks because there's a lot better things that, you know, our officers can be doing at three in the morning than responding to calls because somebody is over served and they're now in a fight in the parking lot, right?
So. I'm just even wondering, I don't know, chamber commerce or someone like, how might we be a resource for them to change behaviors so that it's not a call to the police at three in the morning? But, you know, they start to have a better running business. And it's not really a question for you, maybe? Because we've had some working sessions, I think, around Centennial Village. And maybe, you know, it's something we think about as a council. How do we put some resources together to help hold them to account? But also maybe provide some partnership agreements.
Dave will tell you that I often call Dave and say, can we do this? Can we do that? And he'll just say, no, you can't legally do that. I mean, because I hear you, because we get these complaints about different things. There are different, I don't want to call out different locations. But there are other stores where people have issues, where they're throwing their trash in the parking lot and et cetera. And I says, is there anything we can do with business license? And Dave has told me in many different ways, right? That we aren't limited. I mean, I agree, we can continue the conversation and we should. It's just everything that, it just seems that, and you can explain that, we just have this limited.
Yeah, your enforcement, and I think maybe what Steve's talking about is more not on the enforcement side. Your enforcement mechanisms are going to be limited from a legal standpoint. And this is the conversation that has come up probably once every year or so with regard to someone. You know, can we pull a business license? Well, yeah, your ordinance has a procedure where you can pull business licenses if somebody is behaving in a manner that is nuisance-like, right? But, but, okay, so now I'm the business, right? And you take my license. Do you think I'm closing tomorrow? No, now you cite me for operation without a license, right? So now you've got to bring me to court just for the citation for operation without a license. And then we get to relitigate the whole issue of why you took my license away. And should you have? I mean.
I hope that sounds very.
The enforcement stuff is not good. The proactive stuff, which is maybe where you're going is, is, you know. And I would say this with regard to that establishment. My understanding is there have been numerous meetings, both with council people in this council, as well as the prior council, as well as meetings with the chief and Lieutenant Broman.
And other staff.
And our, right, to try to help coach them, right? In a manner that would be, you know, to operate in a mutually beneficial way. And for whatever reason, it took us sending 300 pages of documents to the alcohol commission for them to even grab some attention. And then it was a bunch of, you know, promises, which we will now see whether they're empty or not.
I applaud the efforts of those people around the table here and staff. And not just this past three weeks, you know, over the course of the many, many years doing this. It truly is a catch-22 situation because we certainly don't want to get things any worse over there. But really, it's almost, if things get worse, then that's eventually in two years that could happen. So again, we aren't here to, yeah, we're here to, as much as we can to work with these businesses as much as we can. But we do need their help. And certainly, the times I've talked to some residents around there and some of the other business owners, they are happy to give suggestions on what can be done over there. And again, if all we can do is keep on working and keep the efforts going, even though they seem like they're futile right now. Certainly, the more documentation, things like you're talking about, Dave. I appreciate your efforts with this and then working with the police and the other staff members. Because again, it is, we just got to keep on top of it. And again, not get discouraged at the lack of, lack of direction from the state agencies.
Any other reports?
I'd like to do a leadership portfolio report from Sherwood for it. So this is the end of the year, or this is the beginning of a new year. You guys might notice I wear these bracelets, you know? So I got two new ones this year. It's called myintent.org, you can put a word on. So the first word is unity, which we already mentioned. And the other one is reconciliation. And I've just been thinking about this. I'll wear them, I'll have them on in my heart all year long. After what happened yesterday to all of us in this country, I felt, and I stayed up late watching the Senate hearings mostly, I felt a real shift in the government. I felt a kind of turning point where there was a change in the heart and minds and people were moved by what happened to our capital yesterday. And I don't know, that sort of inspired me. So I want to just give you all an update that I'm making a commitment this year to unity. I have a logo for it as well. This is an empressand with, this is sort of the beacon of progress. So I want you to know that this is on my heart this year to really work together. We've talked about Team Munster before. I feel like, not a freshman council member, but a sophomore, this is another second year now. So I really want to continue working together, pull my weight. This idea with Marcos, for example, you know, someone wise recently told me, you catch more flies with honey than vinegar. I think one of the, maybe you guys noticed, one of the strengths or maybe things wrong with my brain is I have a lot of ideas, a lot of energy and passion. And so I always want to be around to help throw ideas and work with people. This is Marcos, since you've brought it up, you know, is a resident, is a constituent of our town, just like people who call with an alley that's being overused or speeding down the street and other calls that I've gotten this week. So that's anyways, my focus is what's in my heart. Even if it isn't a bunch of actions, I wanted to give that update. And that's where I'm coming from with my intentions here.
Thank you, Steve.
That brings us down to announcements. January 11th, there is no regular town council meeting. January 18th, we have a regular town council redevelopment commission meeting. January 25th, there is no meeting. February 1st, we have a regular town council redevelopment commission meeting. February 8th, there is no meetings. February 15th is our regular town council redevelopment commission meeting. And that brings us down to adjournment. So moved.
Second.
Second.
On the favor.
Aye.
All right.
We'll be going into the redevelopment and.
This is mine.
Yeah.
Welcome everyone to the redevelopment commission. As we have expired terms, we will do a roll call first. Commissioner Schoen.
Present.
Commissioner Mellon.
Present.
Commissioner Tulwitzky.
Present.
Commissioner Gardner.
Present.
And Commissioner Kulturitis. I'd like to note that John Castro, the liaison with the school board, is in attendance in person. Nice to see you, John.
Nice to see you all.
Happy New Year, John.
As we did previously. Yeah, we've got to open the floor to nominations. We're going to do a president, a vice president, and a secretary. Those positions were previously held by Councillor Mellon, Councillor Kulturitis, and Councillor Schoen in that order. Additionally, we also need to appoint an executive secretary, an executive director, and an attorney. So that's the order that will go this evening. Can I open the floor to nominations for the office of president?
I will move that we nominate Dr. Andy Kulturitis as president.
I second the motion.
Very, very, you'll accept? No, are there any other nominations? And then we can do a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Five zero. Dr. Kulturitis is the president of the redevelopment commission. And congratulations. Can we have nominations for the office of vice president of the redevelopment commission?
I would now make Jeff Gardner.
Second.
Councillor Gardner, you accept the nomination? Very good. Are there any other further nominations? Then I'll close the nominations and we can do a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Mr. Gardner is the new vice president of the redevelopment commission by a five-zero vote. Then we will open the floor for nominations for the office of secretary.
Now you ask what the other three positions were from the last year or what other four? And can we make one motion for all positions?
Technically, can we? Well, the secretary last time was Ken Schoen.
Okay.
Executive secretary, I was in 2020, the executive secretary. The attorney, executive director.
Okay.
And I should audibly say, Mr. Westland was the attorney.
Understand, okay.
Mr. Anderson is the, was the executive director.
One motion, fine.
Okay.
Excellent.
This meeting's getting to be too long, so.
Can we have a nomination for a secretary, executive secretary, executive director, and an attorney, please?
I can, I'll make a motion. Steve Tulwitzky be secretary. Dave Weston be attorney. Wendy Miss be executive secretary. And Dustin Anderson be executive director?
Yes.
Okay.
Does everyone accept their positions?
I accept.
Very good. All of us are accepting. We're going to vote on all four positions. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Through the five-zero with a newly reorganized redevelopment commission. I will hand the gavel off to Dr. Andy.
All right. We already told the orders open to the public. Anybody interested in speaking at this meeting? I will close that. That brings us on to the consent agenda.
I love that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Schoen.
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon.
Yes.
Commissioner Tulwitzky.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Commissioner Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five zero, accept the consent agenda.
All right, there is no more business, new business, reports, announcements. It brings us on to the adjournment.
I move we adjourn. Second.
On the favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I need to adjourn.
You showed John was here, right?
Yes.